Okay, good evening. I'm gonna call the order at 7:19. The August 16th, 2022 board meeting of the Chapua Library Board. Excuse me. Let's stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation. Under God. Undivided.
With liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone raising their hand for public comment this evening?
Yes.
Okay, can we elevate if there's just one person?
Hi, Margaret.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. I have a question. I understand that there is an interim director. I'm just wondering when the vote to appoint the interim director happened.
The last meeting.
Like two weeks ago?
Yeah, the last.
The last meeting.
Well, I went back to the July 19 minutes and it talked about there was an interim director being discussed, but no name was given. And I think, I don't see any meeting between July 19th and today.
Yeah, I think you were going to appoint me this, in this meeting. Yes, retroactively.
Yep.
Formally.
Formally, yes.
Well, I guess you're the interim director, ma'am. I don't really, I'm sorry, I don't know. I assume that's who you are. But it's got nothing to do with you as an individual. It's really the process. You know, a vote to appoint a director and interim director should happen in a public meeting. It involves the commitment of funds and it should be done before funds are committed so that the public can see it going on.
Thank you. We appreciate your comment and we absolutely are taking those steps.
Well, if I may, if I may, excuse me, if I may, under the open meeting law, these are, you know, there are processes that need to be adhered to. The solution should have been, I think, to call a special meeting and then to have her appointed before that, before public monies were spent to pay her, et cetera. It should have happened before she came on board and not a retroactive appointment. And I understand that you have a-
We appreciate your feedback. I'm sorry, but at this point, we're gonna move on.
Well, if I may further, these are, you know, the open meeting law is the essence of a public body, especially one that has taxing authority. So I understand you want to move on, but this is an important issue. You have new board members. All of you should become familiar with the requirements of the open meeting law. And the committee to find a permanent director also may be subject to an open meeting law. And you have counsel, and you should run it by your counsel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be addressing that later this evening. Is there anybody else who is raising their hand for public comment at this time?
Okay.
So are we all, are we all set then?
Yeah.
Okay. Then our first order of business is to accept the July 19 minutes unless anyone has any comments on those. They are accepted.
I make a motion to accept the July 19 meeting minutes.
Okay. And those we accept, and we are all set on motions. We don't do that for our minutes, one of the few exceptions. Then I would like to aptly, as our public comment, my president's report is to welcome Martha Alcott. And I won't say it officially, as we're going to do that in a few minutes, but Martha will be joining us as interim director. And we will, we're making that appointment tonight, retroactive to August 1st. And Martha came back to Chappaqua after a long, successful career here prior to her retirement. And we're grateful for that. So we'll get to that under personnel. And now I will turn it over to Martha for the director report.
Hey. So as Liz said, I started the 1st of August. I met with the department heads to identify priorities. Well, actually, my first two weeks have been working with the board and department heads and the entire staff to establish priorities from a lengthy list of things to do. I've worked with the children's room. Their, the buildings person is, Bill Link is moving ahead with the renovation of the small children's bathroom. And will order fixtures, plumbing fixtures, so he can move ahead with that. The reference department is working on a new bi-monthly newsletter. And they're working with designer Alex DiGnosi to finalize a template for this so they can easily put this, it's a mailed newsletter every other month. So. And for our circulation department, we now have mobile hotspots and phone books that are being ready to circulate to patrons. We're getting our theater back in order so we can present programs in the theater. It's looking a lot better already, but we have, we have a ways to go. It's one of the best features of the library and it's used a lot. And we just need to get it up and running again. And we've been working on the grounds. Jennifer Fahey, one of our board members, has done a lot of work on that for which I thank you, really appreciate that. We've been working with, well, the people who do our lawn, or our, yeah, the landscaper has been doing some extra things. And we've also gotten, we've gotten bids on work that needs to be done on the trees and on the property as well. And there was a big discussion on staff safety. I've arranged to meet with Robbie Bancroft from the Chappaqua Fire Department. And we'll be discussing best practices so we can have a fire drill soon. We haven't had one, the staff, the full staff hasn't had a fire drill in a long time, so that's way overdue. And I've also identified the need for new computers and contacted WLS. And they'll be coming either this week or next week to start that work to install new computers. That's it for now.
Are those for staff or for patrons?
For both. The children's room requested a computer with a printer that would be available to adults in the room. So they could, they could sit down and use, use that right, right in the room. And staff also needs computers. So it's for both staff and patrons. Very productive.
Does anyone have any questions for Martha?
That's all you're able to accomplish?
I try.
So Joe is absent this evening. So he will not be here to give a report. He submitted it, as our good friend Dick used to say, "as submitted." So I saw that for Joe's report. And I will move into finance. And if someone can make a motion to approve the July 2022 statement.
I make a motion to approve the July 2022 financial statements.
Okay, Jennifer makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, there's Bill.
I'll second it. Pam just did it all.
Oh, I did. Sorry.
Brian, seconds. All in favor? Hi?
Hi.
Are we unanimous?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Welcome, Bill.
So I had, in terms of the capital fund, I don't think we need to get into a long discussion, but in terms of overall capital fund, operating fund balance, we went and we looked at, I had Joe look at when the school district typically pays us so that we have a sense of when we should be receiving payment. What they do for us is they, they front-load ahead of when the taxes are collected. So that's one of the reasons why we were grateful for the operating surplus at the end of the last fiscal year and why we weren't looking to quickly move it. And the other being some of the upcoming work. But, but I did want to mention that, you know, once, once, probably in September, we'll be able to look at the different balances and think about if we want to have more, allocate, allocate things differently. We will also start the audit for the last fiscal year in September. So we've been in touch with the auditors. And so let's, let's get, we'll get through the bills and then we'll, we'll look at the approving the auditors. So if nobody has any questions about the capital fund, then I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the August bills.
I make a motion to approve the August bills.
Okay, Pam's making the motion. Do I have a second?
I second the motion to approve the August bills.
Jennifer's second thing. And before we vote on that, I just want to add for discussion that, that we finally were able to get additional trustees as signatories. And Pam went in and signed some physical checks for us this week. So I really appreciate that. And I'm glad that everything is going smoothly for us, that Chantel was able to help make those adjustments with the bank so we can continue to sign. So thank you, Chantel and Pam. And now we have a motion on the table to approve the August 2022 bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, unanimous.
Unanimous.
And at this point, we should, we should, that's exactly how we do this with the auditors. I think we make a motion to, Martha, do you know how we usually word this?
For the selection of the auditors or the engagement of the auditor?
Oh, the engage, the engagement of the auditor, I believe.
That makes sense.
Okay, so we're gonna need a motion to engage our auditors.
I'll make a motion to engage with our auditors.
Second.
And Brian's gonna second that for the audit of the year closing July 2020, July 30th, 2022. And then you can put O'Keefe in there, their official full title, when you write it up, Chantel.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Great. Okay, so I think that brings us to the committee report. Jennifer, do you wanna, you and Bill wanna kick us off with the building and ground?
Sure. Bill, do you want to begin and I'll supplement? You're on mute. Chantel, can we-
Okay, now I'm on mute. Okay, yeah, I, in my report, I've asked for, for some guidance in how you want me to proceed with these things. I don't know if you have my report in front of you, but, you know, I can, do you want me to split up that project into three parts? I can rewrite the scope for the facade assessment, the grounds and landscape rehabilitation and the stream channel rehabilitation. I don't think those levels will require us to bid and they're professional services, so I don't even know if we have to bid them. But we can solicit proposals from three selected vendors for each of the types of work. In our walkthrough, we had looked at the steel stair, the wood stairs on the roof that are well rotted and should actually be replaced with steel stairs. And if the board desires, I will write an RFP for those and get some prices on it. With that, for attachment to the roof and preservation of the roof warranty, I may need to engage an architect. If I do, I will notify the board and give you some prices. With that, I'm looking to, Martha and I walked through the theater earlier this week or last week. And I just want to know how far you want to go in the theater. Would you just want to patch the roof? Do we want to paint the whole theater and backstage? Do we want to do anything with the stage floor? And then the restroom and the children's room, there's been several suggestions. The full thing would be a new floor, new empty stool, touchless faucet, remove the toilet seat, remove the toddler seat, not toilet seat. Replace the soap dispenser, either fix or replace the toilet and patch and paint the walls. And if we went to a GC for that, we should probably include the sink and tech services at the same time. So that's, that's what I'm looking for. I'm ready to go for it. I just got the package, the board package this afternoon. So I just, I got a couple of the proposals for the tree work in email. I don't know if you've vetted that yet, Jennifer, or have you made a decision? Or do you want me to go through those proposals and vet them to make sure we're getting apples and apples?
Liz, what would be your preference in proceeding?
I mean, I, so I don't, I don't know if you saw my note, but I had sent you a note on this thing that I thought that, that of all the proposals that we received, we were, it seemed like the pricing made sense to me for what everyone was, was saying they would do, but it seemed like Savitree was the, you know, the best value for what they were gonna do. And I felt comfortable with what they were suggesting, as did Martha. So I, I personally would say I'd be ready to proceed with that unless, you know, unless Bill thought that was a bad idea.
As I said, I just skimmed the proposals and I thought Savitree was the best, but I didn't do a deep dive on them.
Yes.
Right, right. So I think on that one, I would be comfortable entertaining a motion to have them do that work. I feel like it, it, you know, regardless of what else we do, that's maintenance work that can't really be deferred. I'm not sure where, where we come up with the money in terms of the budget because I don't know that we budgeted into landscaping, you know, for this, this size of work. We, so we'll, we'll have to take a look at that, but I, but regardless, I don't see a way around, it seems like one of those things that you have to do.
Surplus operating costs.
Right. Right. So Liz, I will make a motion that we address the safety issues as well as aesthetics issues presented by the current state of the trees and shrubs around the Chappaqua library and in the two interior courtyards, selecting of the three proposals received that offered by Savitree, who can offer not only the tree care that's needed, but also the supplements where there is disease or fertilizations required.
Do we have a second?
A second motion.
Okay, Brian is seconding. I think we've discussed this. It's a no-brainer. Does anyone have anything to add?
If I may add, just, just to jump back to the various items Bill touched on, we've, we've got a lot under consideration. So just to add clarity, Bill had been working on an RFP for the facade in various aspects of the library, and that's what he's referring to. And per our prior board meetings and executive sessions, we have discussed whether it makes sense to break down the aspects of the RFP to solicit additional bidders to obtain, you know, best results for, for the library. I do make a motion that we do allow Bill Link to proceed with a breakout of the major categories of the prior approved RFP to solicit additional bidders for consideration by the board.
Okay, well, let's, there's a motion on the table right now. So let's, let's deal with the one motion first and then the second one. So your first motion, Jennifer, if I could ask you just to restate it quickly.
Sure. I move to accept the proposal offered by Savitree to address tree care in the property around the library as well as the interior courtyards.
Okay, and Brian seconded that. And all in favor? Aye?
Todd's like to do.
We have, everybody's happy about that one?
We're unanimous.
Okay.
Okay. Liz, now, do you want me to handle this, schedule it with them? And then also schedule, I think he's got some work to the spring and, and later this year. So I will reach out to them.
That's great. And, and I really appreciate the teamwork on this. I know everybody is, is working quickly. And I think this, this is a great solution for the landscaping that, that everyone's happy with. But absolutely, you should certainly manage it from here on out and keep us posted. But we'll, we'll, we're looking forward to having the work done. And, and I do understand that it is a, it is a, not an instantaneous plan, that there are aspects of it that won't happen until the fall.
Right.
Completely understandable. Okay. And then going back to Jennifer's other point in terms of addressing, addressing your, your report and, and looking to give you direction. I agree, Jennifer, that it makes sense to break it into separate areas and look for providers in each. I don't actually think we need to make a motion if there's consensus. I think that's sufficient. I'd just like to hear from Brian and Pam if they had any thoughts there.
We're agreed.
We agree. I agree.
Okay, and if anybody has firms they'd like to suggest, I know a couple of people have mentioned firms that they're familiar with. I will look them over and if they're qualified for this work, I will certainly invite them. Just email me with the firm's name.
That's great. There was one more that I saw locally. Oh, the town, the provider that they're using for the study that they're doing for a potential commuter park by the railroad.
Yes.
I forget the name of the company, but I'm sure if someone asks them, they would give us that name. We may want to consider that entity as well.
Okay, I will.
Because they're familiar with our tax base in, in the research that they're doing in terms of what people want outside. It might be, it might be interesting to, to speak with them.
Okay, great.
Liz, if I may, Bill's also been investigating the cleanout of the water feature in front of the library, which is full of, at this point, 10 years of silt, et cetera. This was something that used to be undertaken on a biannual basis every two years. And we now have two proposals which we'll consider and make a recommendation for the board.
Okay. But you don't want to, you don't want to do that this evening. We're gonna, we're gonna wait on that.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. And then, and then the last piece, so I think, Bill, you're clear that we're comfortable with you looking for separate vendors for the separate pieces.
Yes, yes.
The last, the last thing, I know you're, you had mentioned the, the bathroom adjacent to the new bathroom. We had a pre-existing bathroom that needed some, some attention. And so we're now in the process of getting to that. How does everybody feel about the degree to which we're doing a refresh versus a completely new fixtures in there? Honestly, it's a small bathroom and anything less than a total refresh probably doesn't make the most sense. But I know, I think everybody has seen it at this point. What are, what are your thoughts in terms of, do we replace the toilet or just try to clean it, that sort of thing? And I'm sorry, I can't.
I haven't seen it. I don't have an opinion. But it sounds like your logic of if it's not a total redo, just make- I haven't seen it. I don't have an opinion, but it sounds like your logic of if it's not a total redo, just make do it as is. Makes sense, but I have not investigated it.
Yeah, I think, I think the important thing is to bring it back to service. It's a very useful facility to have for small children and for the children's area. So bringing it back to service in a form that is, you know, acceptable and useful to pay, pay patrons, I think matters. And we could look at proposals for both refresh or completely renovate to bring in line with the bathroom that was fully renovated in the last project and contrast the two.
Okay. And in the meantime, for sure, the fan should be replaced. And I'm not sure Bill was that.
Actually, actually, I investigated it, Liz, and during the construction, a new fan was installed. It's a central fan that includes the new bathroom, the staff bathroom, and the existing restroom and the children's room. There were some control problems, which I fixed, and it's, it's running fine now.
Excellent.
Oh, that's great.
So actually, the two other bathrooms didn't have exhaust for quite some time either.
So, so now the, the technically speaking, there's nothing holding us back from using that older bathroom other than a deep cleaning.
Ah, one problem, it seems rather silly, but those little toilets are custom. And I can't find a seat to match that toilet. I'm still looking. But there are several companies that make toddler toilets, but they use a different size seat. And if I can't get a seat, we're gonna have to replace the toilet, too.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll keep looking. I've been searching plumbing houses and online and I just can't seem to find anything.
Okay, well, hopefully we can find it. It is, it is nice to have the low toilet for the.
It is. Yeah. Oh, they still make them. We could get a new one, but why get a new one if all we need is a seat?
Right, absolutely. Okay.
All right. So I, I will get some proposals for that. The board doesn't need to vote on that until we get the proposals. I just wanted some guidance. And do we want to include the same, the sink and the tech services with this, as part of that project? Like get one general contractor in and do it all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless someone, unless we're I think, is everyone nodding along? Does that work?
We're in agreement.
Okay, great. Okay, so I think building and ground, we've made some nice progress. Jennifer, real quickly, can you just recap what our, what our next steps are?
Certainly. So Bill will be breaking down the RFP that was already underway and determining additional bidders, confirming their interest, sending out the RFP package and setting a timeline for their response for our evaluation. Bill's identified a number of miscellaneous repairs, having given tour for Martha, your, yourself, myself of the entire facility and all these safety issues, including the small children's bathroom, the broken stairs on the roof, et cetera. The sink in the reference area will be addressed by a single contractor. So Bill will be working on obtaining bids for that project. And as mentioned, we will be compiling the proposals for the de-silting and deep, and dredging of the water feature for board consideration.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions or are we good on buildings and grounds?
Were we going to address the repaving of the parking lot?
Well, that would be done with the, the grounds and landscape renovation. That is a part of that. If we, we need to select, get that done. That's the primary one. We'll get that one done the quickest. As soon as we have a firm on board, we can have them write up a some biddable documents for replacing the parking lot. So we can get that in. The, the plants are usually open till November. So that's a, you know, it'll be, we'll need every minute of that to get, to get a, you know, drawing, you know, biddable documents out and get, get a bid back and get a contract in place.
Yeah, I would think that would be a big priority because.
It is. We can't go through another winter without.
No, we can't, we can't. And the, that we typically get a lot of potholes in the parking lot that patrons complain about a lot. So, and they're dangerous. So.
Yes.
Need to.
Is there any grant, is there any grant money we could be applying for, for that lot?
I, you know, I'm not familiar with grants for libraries, but I believe there is always something available for libraries. I know the other library I do work for applies for quite a few grants. I think there's a state library grant, and then there's there's a state municipal grants. There's, there's a few grants, you know, a few places around, you can go for grants, but grant writing is not my expertise.
Right, okay.
Liz, we'll add that. Sorry.
We'll look into.
Yeah, something we need to investigate. I know the company that's working with the town, exploring their potential trail is, they had, they spoke a little bit, I think someone there does grant work. So I don't know if it's a matter of finding a third party or if it's a matter of us getting up to speed on, on grants or if that's a role that's missing in the library. But it's something to consider because we definitely should be looking for 50/50 grants when we're doing construction.
I think they're typically, I think the grant process is typically a long one. I don't know that it would work for work that we need to get done quickly, but I, I, we can certainly look into that.
Right. I mean, I think that was our challenge with the roof. And perhaps we're going to be in the same situation again, but we should at least explore it and see what we're, what we're able to.
Agreed.
And we also, so, so moving on. Did, would, I think that's it for buildings and grounds. Okay. And then? Go ahead.
No, I, I was just gonna say goodnight.
Oh, thank you, Bill.
Unless you need me to stay for something else.
Um, I think the only other thing that pertains to you would be a renewal of your contract. And I'm not sure, I think we will probably enter into executive session, discuss, and then come out and take any action. So it'll be, it'll be later. I don't think you need to stick around.
That is fine.
Unless anyone has any questions for Bill.
No questions for me.
Okay, so I, I think.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening, and we'll see you in the morning, Martha.
Okay, Bill. Thanks.
Okay. So I think we're gonna come back out of the executive session to do the contracts for our providers, the two that we have pending. And then and then as far as the policy committee, Pam and I had met with some of the library to go over the social media policy. And I think we're in a pretty good place where we can probably bring that back at our next meeting because I don't think we included it today. Is that correct, Pam?
Correct. It's not, it's not in.
Yeah, okay. And I have to, I'll also be bringing the CIRC. So our, our September back-to-school meeting will make sure we come prepared with those policies to be adopted. Okay. On the matter of personnel, I think we're gonna we're gonna go into executive session. And then did you want to give a a committee update, or does it make sense to hold off on that, too, for the search committee till after we come back out?
I'd like to do that after we come back out.
Okay. All right. So then, at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone. I think we have conducted the majority of our business that we can do pending going into an executive session for to discuss matters of personnel. Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion with the time to go into the executive session?
I make a motion that at 8:01 PM this evening, the board moves into executive session.
I second it. I second it.
Okay, all in favor? I?
I.
Okay, so for, for this to work, we have to pause the recording. Okay, so now we're gonna re, so now we need to get Chantel and rejoin the public session.
Okay, you guys are muted, Brian, Jen. Okay, thanks, Chantel.
Yeah, people are still there.
Okay.
Okay, so we're rejoining. Are we recording?
Yes.
Okay, we're rejoining the public session at 8:33 PM. No motions were made, no actions were taken during the executive session. And we have some personnel and contract actions to take. So our first order of business is to retroactively formalize the arrangement with Martha Alcott. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to formalize relationship with Martha.
Thank you. I second the motion.
Okay. And, okay, so just to be clear, that motion is to appoint Martha Brett as interim library director retroactive to August 1st, 2022 at the hourly wage of $71.43.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so I'm sorry, did Jennifer make the motion and Brian seconded the motion?
I made it and.
And I seconded it.
Okay, other way around. Okay. All in favor?
I.
I.
Unanimous. Okay, congratulations, Director Alcott.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Okay, we have just a few more contracts that we will now need to go over. So William C. Link submitted his facilities management contract. Does someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we renew the contract with William C. Link effective June 30th, 2022, as proposed.
I second it.
All in favor? I?
I.
Unanimous. And we also have a proposal from Joseph Gallo.
I make a motion that we accept the contract with Joseph Gallo.
I second it.
All in favor? I. And then we have a contract with Bond, Shonek, and King.
Right, we do have an engagement letter from the auditors as well for the annual audit.
Did we not enter into that during the meeting? Did I, did I not do that earlier?
We agreed to the engagement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we agreed to it.
As you proposed. Oh, yes.
Okay, so just, so just a motion then to, to reengage with Bond, Shonek, and King for the annual year, starting June 30th, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Who would like to make that motion?
I make a motion that we reengage with Bond, Shonek, and King effective June 30th, 2022. For.
I second it. I second it.
Great. Jennifer made the motion. Pam seconded. All in favor? I?
I.
I.
I think we're frozen.
Okay, unanimous. That is all of them. Speaking, yeah?
I didn't do it.
Okay. Is there any, any other new business trustees?
Yes, I'd like to give an update on the search committee.
Oh, correct, yeah. Thank you, Pam.
So we have interviewed a half a dozen candidates. We're narrowing down the search, getting close to making an offer to a candidate.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. And I thank the committee for all of their hard work.
Thank you, Pam. Really appreciate you and all the hours your committee has put into the search.
You're very welcome.
Okay, is there anything else for this evening's meeting?
No.
Okay, well, then with that, our next meeting will be September 19th at 7:30. And I would just ask someone to make a motion to end their meeting.
I make a motion to conclude our meeting at 8:39 PM.
I second it.
I'm seconded. All in favor?
I. I.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.